Montgomery Economic Development Corporation regular meeting and it is six o'clock. So we will, we'll start out with a Pledge of Allegiance.
It's okay.
A Pledge of Allegiance. Could we pray for Carol Lenglet? Yeah, we definitely will do that. Yeah, we'll do that. All right. So a Pledge of Allegiance to the side of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, under the Texas flag, a Pledge of Allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible. Is it okay, can we say a prayer, a quick prayer for our Carol Lenglet? Arnett, would you pray for her?
Father God, thank you for today. And Lord, we just want to ask you, a special prayer to our dear Carol Lenglet, Lord. You know, she's a queen and she's a wonderful lady, Lord. We just want you to bless her, Lord, touch her body while she's sick, Lord, bring love while she's torn down, Lord. Well, when we don't have a clue on this side, give us a place in your kingdom to praise your name forever. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Jeff, can I get that data on your girl?
Yes.
Okay. She had the last guest. What was it called? Diane? He goes one time about her age. She did have probably had a small stroke. They're going to keep her in tonight. She sounds great when I talk to her. She just said anything because she's very excited about it.
Is she still feisty? All right. She's back. Okay. Well, yeah, we definitely have Carol in our prayers for sure and she knows we love her. Okay, so we, the Economic Development Corporation received comments from the public if there are any matters. Are there any? We don't have anybody sign. No? Okay. All right. Okay, then we'll just head on to our agenda then. The item number three is consideration possible action on the regular workshop meeting minutes of July 9th, 2025. I've read them. Everything looks in order to me, but we would need a motion to approve them.
Make the motion to approve regular workshop meeting minutes for July 9th, 2025.
Can I have a second?
I'd like to amend the motion and just make them add the consent agenda, to approve the consent agenda as presented.
To approve the what now?
The consent agenda as presented. It knocks off all the notes and stuff. We don't have to vote on each one.
Yeah. Right. Okay. All right. Well, so the motion's been amended. Can we get a second?
I'll second.
Okay. So it's been motioned and seconded that we approve the consent agenda, which is the consideration on the regular meeting, the approval of the regular workshop meeting minutes for July 9th and July 15th. It's amendable, debatable, requires a majority vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. The agenda meeting minutes have passed. All right. We do have, all right. So the next item is item number five, consideration possible action to approve the quality of life events for fiscal year 2025 and 2026. Let me hold on just one second. I believe Stephanie is in the audience today. Stephanie, you don't want to give us an update?
Good evening.
Good evening. Hi, Stephanie.
Hi. So there have been, to my understanding, there's been a couple of changes since this agenda was prepared a couple of weeks ago. So it's probably best that I just kind of give like an overview of the remaining events because I really don't have the specific details on any changes.
Okay.
So moving forward, we have the Montgomery Book Walk coming up in October. We have the Lone Star Street Dance. We have Trick or Treat, Light Up the Park, and the Christmas Parade. We do have a couple of movie nights. To my understanding, that is going away, but I'm not certain. But there are, there is one scheduled for this end of the year budget. The other two remaining are on next year's budget if the movie has been made.
Okay. But we can determine that down the road. We don't, I mean, and that's also a weather related?
Yes.
Okay. The snow party.
So the snow party, we talked, I guess that was probably one of the first ones that in discussion we were going to eliminate because logistically putting the Christmas parade on and the snow party right after that with the road closures and getting the box trucks and the 18-wheelers in would have been a problem. We probably could have made it work, but logistically it's very challenging. After I spoke to Mike, I realized, I'm like, you know what? You're right. And that is about a $18,000 to $22,000 dollar risk, if it's nice weather or not to break snow in. It is a lovely event. We get, it's well attended, but it is very costly. And just looking at our budget only being 10%, we had to eliminate something. So that was the first one. Because we already have the Christmas parade, we have the cookie walk, we have the house tour, the historical tour.
Okay. So snow party goes away for this year if we decide to?
If you decide to. I didn't put it on here because I think our discussion several weeks ago, we're like, let's just go ahead and make that. But of course, it's the board's decision.
So we have to decide on that.
Brent, do you want to comment at all about, because this is the quality of life events, I assume, is there somewhere in the agenda where we talk about moving the money instead of us paying for it? Because we're getting educated on our terms of finance, right?
Yeah. Sure. I can speak to it. So when I got here, you know, looking through all the events that you were doing through EDC, I'm going to say that most of them are probably not EDC related, you know? They do not promote the development of the community or the economic development of the community. That's not to say we don't want to have these events. I just think that the money should not come out of economic development. Now, you can give the city some money or administration and to help with some of the expenses related to organizing these events or doing some of that. That's perfectly fine. But my recommendation is that the city takes over any of the event management or any of that specifically, that you don't give money specifically to individual events. Now, to give you an example, if we're talking about a big city that's running a festival, you can see how a big festival with 100,000 people could bring a lot of money into a city. Economic development sometimes do get involved in those types of events. Cities do as well, you know, through their parks and recreation. You know, they'll have movie night or music in the park and those different things. Those are usually out of city budgets. So in order to stay legal, if you will, I think we should move that outside of what EDC does. And things like the video and those kinds of things that you're looking at for advertising?
Right.
Perfect. That's a perfect fit, what the law says economic development should do. You have 10%, you know, of your budget you can use for advertising and promotion. Theoretically, I mean, you're a small community, but you're growing. When you're really small, you can theoretically say that sponsoring an event might be good advertising for you, but if you really thought about it, it'd be hard for us to tell me that if you call it the EDC parade, that that would somehow promote business development in our community. You know, you guys can do a whole lot of things as a type meet. You can build parks, you can purchase property, you can turn that property into open space, you can, you know, do all kinds of things, which is quality of life because, you know, you're saving green space.
Right.
You could build a road that goes to an industrial park, you know, that you're developing into, you know, future business. I mean, that's really what EDCs are designed for. And I think, you know, just because of how things evolved with you guys and the Jacob Center and different things, I think it just happened that way.
Right.
But I think we should correct as we're growing and get the money where it's supposed to be. That's where I was going. That's why she's, sure. Because she doesn't know what, you know, her duties are. But we're going to put her as purely as economic development, as work with you guys. We'll start reaching out to businesses, talking to some of these developers and doing some of that kind of stuff that really is what economic development.
So what would happen with her, would her role transition a little bit more towards us and less towards?
It will.
Events? Who would handle that?
It's on that committee on the city side then.
Yeah.
Well, the city is going to have to go through a process and decide. We already put some money in the budget to, you know, continue what's going on. We don't want things to disappear, to get rid of. That was never the intention. I just don't want it to be under the EDC umbrella.
Sure.
Giving money for grants and different things for downtown development, you know, all of that's perfect.
Okay.
It's exactly what you should be doing. You know, 50/50 grants to make all the buildings pretty downtown and any of that stuff. And we can look at that. We can have a discussion. I know I saw some of your plans, some of the development down there. We can have some meetings going forward about that kind of stuff, see where we're at on those plans, detect the plans that the, what was her name? The, what was the company that did the plan for it?
Retail strategy?
Retail strategy. We can take the data they've already given us.
Right.
We can work with that. We can have some, you know, that's what we should be talking about here, I think, in these meetings and, you know, see how we carry that forward.
Okay. Well, will EDC allocate money to the city annually to kind of help that or will it be coming from the city's budget in order to help these? Because I guess my thing with the, with the, with the events that take place, you know, we're a small town with events that take place. If a person come ask, if they get 50 people in here, people buy gas and buy food, that's impacting the economy. So I guess from that standpoint, how would the city allocate that money? Would it be a grant that they ask from the city for?
No. So the way I foresee us trying to do this is that we would still, you know, it would be a more open conversation with council as well as us as far as what events we want to have, but we would transfer, you know, a certain amount of money over to the Parks and Recreation Fund. We can still help fund a large percentage of it. It's just can't come out of our system.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
The check has to be written from over there, basically.
If you look at the law, it says promote new or expand business development, you know? If you're not creating primary jobs, which we don't have to because we're a small community, it allows you to do some quality of life. But quality of life really is building a new park, open space, you know, doing all those other things if we wanted to redo the community center.
Right.
Those are the kind of things that you could do with that money.
Okay.
And I think we just need to define that a little bit better. If you remember back in some of that training that they gave you.
Right.
It talked about doing some of that. And you have a pretty good plan to do some of those things.
So would we still, do we still have to go to council every time we make a decision?
Well, yes, that still works the same way. Any expenditure over $10,000 has to go through that process. And it actually has to go through other processes. We have to put it in the paper. We have to do 60 days.
Make nervous system bids and stuff like that.
Everything still functions exactly like ours.
They wouldn't be coming to us anyway if we give the money to the city. The city would be approved of it.
Right.
Correct?
Correct. Yes. And we have a permit process where these events, anybody that wants to bring an event needs to fill out a permit annually anyways. So we need to coordinate with our police department and the.
It's really not EDC thing anymore.
No.
It's just morphed into that over the years.
Yes. I understand that. I just want to, you know, as we're going forward, let's correct it.
Clean it up.
Get it so it's, you know, not in that gray area, if you will.
So just so we're clear on the record, these events aren't going away. They're just being reassigned or redirected to the city. And then Stephanie is going to become a little more aligned with the EDC?
Yes.
And less events?
Yes. We're going to get her some more training. She's going to work with me.
Good.
I'm an EDC expert. We've only worked with them for a long time. I always hire them and bring them in.
Right.
So at least I know. But that's what you got here for. I mean, you guys have good ideas. You live here, this is your community.
Right.
You know, where can we help? You know, where can this money be best utilized?
Well, we have, we have ideas on where it can be best utilized. We're still waiting on some of it to materialize, you know? So hopefully.
Of course, the downtown stuff's going good and we can review that. We can get some video or some slideshow so you can see, you know, where those plans are. We should, and I'll work with her. She should give those, these updates since we have these meetings, you know, this is where it's at, what's happening.
Well, it's actually really exciting because we could use boots on the ground in-house.
Yes.
And that's what we did. We talked about, about having a director at one point, but having someone in-house that can actually guide the ship a little bit when we're waiting for the next meeting, basically, which is, you know, once a month. And we can also do one in between if we need to, but the point is, is, you know, she knows, she knows the lay of land pretty well.
So where would the Wayfinder project fall?
I think that's perfect where it is.
EDC season.
I think that's perfect where it is. That's really, you know, to promote your downtown, to help out. So that, I believe that still fits.
So Brent, one last question, at least for me anyway. We've, we've already written our budget for next year. Where do some of these monies fall into that were originally scheduled for quality of life? Do they get reallocated or?
So we'll have to look at that exactly how. We'll probably have another meeting or so and I'll get with Mary Ann. If you guys decide as a group to send some money to Parks and Recreation or administrative to help out with some of this stuff, we can just set up a line item, one-year transfer type of deal.
Okay.
Where you continue to support that kind of stuff.
Okay. The concern I have is that, I know change is hard for people to accept. And if you really want to change, you just kind of ruin it. But what I don't want to see is groups and people not want to do events because of creative red tape, because people just say, and then you just got to, all the events that people are used to, the cookie walk and they disappear. I just don't want that. So I think by making a change, we still have to embrace and say, this is what we're going to do, but we're just doing it different, you know? So that's why I don't want to. We don't have a lot of events as it is, you know?
No. And I think that, you know, I mean, based on what I've learned anyways, you know, some events have come and changed and, you know, so you're going to get a little bit of that anyway.
Yeah.
But these events are, for the most part, maybe besides, you know, the Christmas stuff, maybe the Halloween, are really private events. And we still support that. We get their, you know, application, we know about it. We have the police, we have the utility guys to block the roads. That's really what the city does anyways. That's our part, not necessarily people asking for money to do these things. They're just wanting the support so they can do.
So by moving it over, would it also allow for sponsorships and other things like that corporate outside city government or would?
If it's a, if it's a private event, yes, they could, they could do that. Now, for example, if we wanted to have sponsorship within something that we do as a city, that's always a little tricky.
Yeah.
It's a little tricky to manage because we can't favor one person. We just kind of have to open it up, you know? A lot of rules. Red tape, like he said.
Yeah, right.
So if you can get like, you know, Rotary, Lions Club, or somebody to be the spokesperson, absolutely. Why wouldn't you do that?
501(c)(3) nonprofit community service.
Yeah, HEBs and people like that, I mean, they want to support these types of community events. They want to be a part of it.
Right.
And those are people that are better suited, just like what we're going to talk about later with this property, you know?
Right.
Cities are just kind of handicapped for some things, other things.
That's what I did.
Okay.
All right. Well, any other questions? Hey, Ryan.
Hey.
Welcome. Just for the record, Ryan Lundin is here as well. Okay. So, well, then the decision, there's really no, do we, do we need a motion? No, it's just a discussion.
There's no action.
I'll come back in another reading down the road here and kind of line this out for you.
Okay.
And you guys can decide in the future, because I got to get with council again and say, you know?
Right.
Exactly what we should do.
How we're going to transition this over. Okay.
So Jeff, just take, you take no action on that.
Yeah. So, yeah, well, there is no action to be taken for now, so that's for sure. So we'll just say item number five, we're not going to take action on that item, but I do have a question though. We're scrapping six, correct? We don't need a resolution, right? Okay. So item number five, we'll not take action on. Item number six has been removed from the agenda. And then so that brings us to economic development reports for item number seven, discussion of possible action on the financial reports for May and June of 2025. And I believe that brings up, wait, there's a drum roll for her.
Question.
Only one. Okay. Go ahead, Mary Ann.
All right. All right. You've got two months here since I did not include May and last month. We do have May and June. We don't have any areas of concern. We've already achieved the sales tax money. So does anybody have any questions about the report for our current year?
I have a couple of questions. How are we trending towards, now that we've received revenue from the new entities that have popped up in the area, how are we trending? Are we still trending towards our goal for budget goal, income budget goal?
Yes. We're above where we had projected.
We're above where we projected? Do you know as a percentage by about how much?
I have not calculated that. As a year, as a year as total, we're up, we're about 24%.
Above where we?
Where we were last year.
Okay. Good.
So you have to remember though that that's a little bit skewed because there was an anomaly payment in the month of February where it was a large audit collection.
Right.
Following back to 2017.
Oh, Lord. Okay.
So that's going to affect those numbers a bit.
Okay.
Overall, we're still.
We're doing, we're doing, we're doing better. Good. All right. Good. Any other questions on our financial report? Everybody? Okay. Well, I guess the only action is to accept the financial report as is. Can we get a motion to do that?
I'll make a motion to accept the financial report.
Okay. So Ryan Lundin has made a motion to accept the financial report for May and June 2025, been seconded by Arnett. It's amendable, debatable, requires a majority vote. All those in favor say aye. All opposed? The motion, or the motion passes? Yes. So that's item number seven. So we're going to flip over to executive session. I need to read this into, okay. So we're going to adjourn to a closed executive session as authorized by the Texas Open Meetings Act, Chapter 551 of the Government Code. This is a closed session. Montgomery Economic Development Corporation will meet in closed section pursuant to the provisions of Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in 551.072 deliberations about real property regarding the purchase of 213 Prairie Street. And we are now in executive session, man. Oh, do you want to talk? You'll have to wait. Okay. And can I? And can I... At 6:35, Montgomery Economic Development Corporation has reconvened in open session and deliberations about the real property for 2000, uh, 213 Prairie Street, sorry. We have got a motion, I believe.
Yeah, make a motion to allow the president of the MEDC, Jeff D'Angelo, to sign an interlocal agreement for the conveyance of the property located at 213 Prairie Street, Montgomery, Texas, to the MEDC.
Second?
I'll second.
The motion seconded that the board allowed me to sign off on... To allow the president to sign off on the interlocal agreement for the conveyance of the property located at 213 Prairie Street, Montgomery, Texas, 77356, to the EDC. It's amendable, debatable, requires a majority vote. All those in favor say aye. And all those opposed, so the ayes had it. And we will get that conveyance agreement forthwith. Thank you, Brent, for your guidance on that. Appreciate that. Okay. Now, we're to the boarding party section here. And I do have some, a couple of little points that I made last time that still haven't been, but I don't know. Ms. Tilly, would you, just out of curiosity, have any updates for us on the wayfinding and McCowen or any of that?
On the wayfinding, it's difficult to find a sign company that will manufacture and install that is low or close to here. So, I am having to expand the search further out to Texas. Hopefully, I can find someone that's still in there. But as soon as I can find someone, I'll have two more quotes available.
Okay.
In addition to...
Do you need any help? Can we assist you in any way? Come sit on the phones? Calling?
It's just really difficult, the types of signs and the requirements the state puts on us. Not anybody can do that. The type of reflective material, I mean, there's a lot of rules to that.
Okay, so it's...
The lettering, I mean, it's just a lot of...
It's got to be somebody that knows what they're doing with respect to the rules and...
Rules, the right of way, whether it's text dot or even the accounting's right of way rules, yes. So, we just need to find someone who is able to do all of that.
Were Mr. Lundin and yourself able to get ahold of? No?
No, we haven't done yet.
Okay.
I mean, we can't. Right now, I wanted to make sure that it was an even playing field. So, all the documents that I provided to FSG are the same documents that I'm providing to other companies who are going to give a quote for us.
Okay.
And then after we do that, that's when Mr. Lundin and I can go through and say, here are the signs that we want to tweak or change any lettering to, anything like that. Or if we even want to remove some of the signage. That's when we'll go through that.
Should we schedule a meeting to try to get this wrapped up? I mean, it's been really going on for over a year now. I mean, it's kind of a long time. How do we...
I've just had it for the last few months.
I know, I know, not you. I'm just talking about us.
We're going to continue to call. We have Sarswell, we have TM on my board, and we have HJC.
Okay.
So, I'm going off of those lists. And right now, I'm going through TM on my board's list.
All right, so for the next meeting, can we have... Let's just take what we can get. Let's see what we have available. I mean, whatever you have by the, by the September meeting, I think we need to make a decision. Okay? So, we either got it or we don't got it.
Just so you know, it isn't like the contractors are separated by sign contractors and regular construction contractors. I have to call all of the construction contractors.
Oh, wow.
See if they actually do that, Tom.
Yeah.
They don't have specific...
Instead of a decision in September, can we just get it up, Dave?
We could, but Casey, this has been going on now for almost 18 months.
I understand it's Thursday.
And the prices just keep going up and then...
Who does the Woodlands use? Who does Conroy?
Yeah, they got these towns guys.
Okay, I imagine they're back on their house. A lot of cities have done that now because of the new changes, the rules.
Right.
They just buy a printer and then apply standards. They buy the blanks and it's...
So, what do you think? Do you think Conroy would make signs for us if we paid him?
Do you have any contact?
Why not?
That's an interesting concept. It's good idea.
I mean, they never wanted to give us a deal on streets. Well, we need to build, make big streaks.
How does that work with bidding and...
It'd be an interlocal agreement.
Tell them we give them a gallon of water to you.
We'll run a hose over to the city hall. Anyway...
So, do we like, did we post this? Like, I know, like, CivCast and stuff like that, is that not the appropriate place for this? Like, whenever we do like a road project, usually the engineer will post it on like CivCast or something.
It's possible you might get a bike out there.
Yeah, I just, I don't know.
I mean, it's really the same companies generally that are on where she's looking, but it might be.
Like, WGA can help us with, with advertising this to get bids in? Because this is what they do for us all the time with like different projects to get bids.
Those are more the open bids, not the Sarswell, TM on my board.
Yeah, it is, yes, right.
I mean, it seems to me like if we could get Conroy to do it, we're talking an interlocal agreement, that's got to be a lot easier than going out to bid, right?
How many signs is it in O'Call?
It's not a ton. I mean, we just have the one big monument sign and, and everything else is pretty much standard stuff, so...
Our signs are not necessarily just a green background with white...
No, no, I mean, we have what we want and everything.
And they would have a lot of rules on the right of ways and DOT requirements.
Yeah, they would have the proper sign size. It's the material that they would have to probably buy, the special material.
Tilly, can I set up a, a visit with you perhaps next week to kind of, what, what is this week? This is Tuesday, I read, yeah, I'll be, so sometime next week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, whatever's good for you. Can we set a, a visit up? And we'll sit down and we'll roll through Chris with engineering on McCowen. And by that time, maybe you will have able, been able to get ahold of some folks. And then I'll just help you push this along.
Is there another city that has wayfinding besides than Conroy?
Very in-house wayfinding?
I don't know, Woodlands.
Doesn't Woodlands do their own signs?
Woodlands?
There are, there are local companies around here that do installation. I don't know as far as, they may have a contractor. There's Safeco is one of them. There's another one called Third Coast. You see them all over the place doing street lights. So, Craycon out of Magnolia.
Okay.
They do, they did, you know, all the 99 Parkway and all that stuff, so they, these are installers.
It probably wouldn't be hard to find someone to install them.
Yeah, so, I'm saying the installers, they have sources to where they, they get their product.
Well, have we put out a, a scope of work and put it in the paper? Have we done that exactly, the requirements?
Yeah, I don't know about the paper because that, that turns into an open bid. And then there's requirements for that.
We're trying to avoid the open bid process and...
It's that city thing again.
There you go. But, but that being said, this is taking forever, so I mean, maybe...
I'm saying, why can't we go that route? It helps get the word out better.
Yeah, agreed.
I don't remember my book, but it got...
If, if it's over a certain dollar amount, then it's sealed bids. You have to go through that whole process. You have to advertise it in the papers and that.
But then we can still do sealed bids. We can advertise it like on CivCast and say, this is sealed bids by this date. And we can advertise it that way. But that's typically what Quiddity does for us on the projects they lead. But, or so many cities do it, but...
I've seen, I've seen bids and said, the budget is $20,000. I mean, you know...
Yeah, they, they bumped that up to sealed bids this year, but depends on if it, it's over $100,000.
Yeah. We're way over...
Yeah, we're way over under. It's, the whole reason I'm trying to be patient is, I, I've always worked by this rule. When you're making money, you hustle. When you're spending money, you're dragging feet, so...
That's what I'm saying, we, we make a rule in that... We're dragging forever, though. We make a rule and the price gets the same quality job done for less than $100,000 if we put it out.
Listen, Casey, and you know this, I'm not, I'm singing to the choir here, but since we've been dragging our feet, our budget's been siphoned by half.
Yeah.
I would prefer to, like, let's spend it on what we, EDC stuff and before we lose it.
Well, it's already budgeted. I mean, we've got it set aside, so I'm not, I'm not worried about that.
I'm not either. I just want to get it moving along. This is taking way too long. I mean, I, I, we don't do business like this. We got to get moving along.
Well, growth, growth is not waiting on us.
The, the original quote she gave us to, to put in a half a dozen signs was $700,000. Well, I'm sorry, but I'm, there's no way I'm doing that.
Agreed. I mean, we don't have to vote yes on anything. I just want to put it, I just want to get it to a vote. Let's see if we can come up with something. I mean, we, I know we voted yes on a lot of things, but if it's not right, we're not right.
And I understand, you know, it, it has taken us a long time to get to where we are. Ms. Tilly has just recently, in the last couple of months, taken it over. And then just recently gotten some help, Brent coming and things like that. So, they've had a lot on their plate.
Yeah. I, I want to support you though. Let me get in there and work with you. I, I can pick up a phone and call people and get, get some things going along. So, we'll set up a time for next Tuesday or Wednesday, a week from today or tomorrow. Yeah, and then I'll, I'll be available to come spend some time with you. Whatever works for you, just let me know. Send me a note, okay? As far as McCowen goes, were we supposed to meet with Chris Roznowski, the engineer?
We're still working on things. I don't know.
My understanding with McCowen is that the attorneys are still working on the easement agreements.
Easement agreements, okay.
And now that we've added the State House, that's another new easement agreement.
Okay. Should we, should we follow up with them as well or is that something we need to do or...
Well, we can do...
Maybe at the same time? All right, let's plan. That'll be our two agenda items. Okay? Yeah, and I, I can help. Do we, the attorney, is that Alan? Okay, so do we need to get a, a note to him or? I know that everybody's busy until you put it in front of them. So, if we let him know that we need to know where those easement agreements are?
Well, he's going back and forth with other attorneys, too. That's really...
Really, okay. All right. Okay, so, well, we'll discuss that when we get together, okay?
Because we have to make the easement agreements with the property owners, so there's...
Yeah, I understand. We got to have those. Ms. Fox, did you have anything else that you needed to throw in? Are we good? I love it when you're totally good.
So, before you go to close, oh, are you going to go to close or go to 10?
Well, we still, we're still in the boarding party. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so I just want verification on the events we are following through with this year. It's my understanding I'll be seeing that through until changes, right?
Right.
Okay. So, we've got basically 44 days to get them all done. That's why I'm kind of like, let's, let's go ahead and do this. 44 working days, business days, so to speak. Okay, so we have movie night September the 27th. Yes?
Keep it or, or dump it? Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
I, I, I mean, I can't speak for everybody, but I don't think we need movie nights anymore.
So, we have the trick or treat. We're moving forward now.
Keep, keep the trick or treat.
Okay. The Lone Star Street dance.
Yes.
Okay. Light at the park.
Yes.
Christmas parade.
Yep, yes.
No snow party.
No snow party.
And Montgomery quilt walk.
Yeah, yes.
Isn't that like next weekend?
No, October 17th and 18th.
Feels like next weekend.
The next plan will be October 17th, 17th and 18th. That's the quilt walk. And then the following weekend, I do believe that is trick or treat.
Yeah. Okay.
So...
All right, we know where we're going.
Sounds good.
With the trick or treat, I know there was a decision made last year not to, what was it? To just buy the candy and give it to them? That's what it is. We need to buy the candy and just give it to the people.
That's what we've decided to do.
Trying to give them money with the seats and whatever. So, we're going to buy the candy and just don't...
You, you've got to, you've got to get a W9 from every single vendor, stupid. Let's just give them the candy.
Yeah, we're just going to buy, here's some candy, give it out, and we run out of it.
Does that sound good, Sid?
I've heard stamped EDC, MEDC on every one.
Arnett's got all kinds of time. Yeah, right.
Okay, so I've been in contact with a couple of people with transition of events. That's all off the table for now.
What?
Because I've been talking to other organizations about the events and transferring the events over. So, that's off the table. over, so that's off the table.
No, I think...
No, 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 no. Don't, 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 don't change anything, all we're gonna do...
The city will still, we can look at Halloween, Christmas Parade, any of those events on the city side, we can, we can help people manage those.
Okay.
Good for you, too?
Thank you.
All right. Okay, all right, so now we'll go to item number 10, which is the closing, closing agenda. Items for consideration replacement on future agendas. Did you have something, Casey?
Just to, if we could get updates on those two projects.
Okay. We had that supposed to be on this agenda. Can we make sure that it actually shows up on the agenda this next time, so...
Update from Chris specifically.
I need an update from Chris, and we need an update from Tilly on those two projects, so we'll just say that's going for the next...
We'll get some printouts and stuff, too. WGA, they weren't quite ready because we're waiting on a few things, but that's why...
Okay.
And we had, they had talked earlier, I guess council approved some type of computers or something for communication.
Oh, yeah, they've...
For communication.
Yeah.
Make it a little bit better than what we have.
Yeah.
Where do we stand on the computers?
Ruby's working on that, and Ruby's been in and out with the family.
Family issue, yes.
But they haven't arrived, yes.
All right, so we'll put that on the next meeting as well, just in case it doesn't make it before then. But it probably will, right? It's not that hard to...
I don't know, it just depends. I ordered 14 tablets in April.
14 in April, and you haven't got them yet?
Wow.
You know, there's a place called Amazon.
Yeah, but these are, these are intrinsically safe. I need them to be intrinsically safe.
Oh, okay, so this is a different kind of... All right, well, I don't, do we have anything else to add for future agenda items? Are there anything?
No.
Nothing? Okay. Dan, you good?
Nope.
Okay, so then we'll take a motion to adjourn the meeting at 6:52?
I still move.
Okay, so it's been moved, a motion by Dan Walker that we adjourn the meeting on, seconded by everybody? Okay, seconded by Arnett. It's amenable, debatable, requires a majority vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And no, no, so it's been, we did it.
Thanks for being around.
Sorry, I was late, I had to pop off my truck in the traffic.
That's okay, we're glad you're here, man.
Wade holds the record for them most times not showing up.